It is now 7:00 PM and we will call to order this meeting of the Wauwatosa School Board. As is our custom, we will begin with a moment of silent reflection. Dr. Erdl, what do you call the roll?
Mr. Kroner, here. Mr. Meyer?
Here.
Mrs. Milfeld?
Here.
Mrs. Randall?
Here.
Mr. Ray?
Here.
Mrs. Weber?
Here.
Mrs. Fee?
Here. We begin our meetings with an opportunity for public comment on non-agenda items. Members of the Wauwatosa School Board value the input of students, parents, staff members, and community members. The Board's regularly scheduled meetings provide an opportunity for opinions and concerns to be expressed publicly. The Board values all comments and will respectfully consider their input in decision-making. The Board requests that individuals limit their comment on each item to three minutes. Following any comment, an individual Board member may respond on the issue raised. However, it is not the intent of the public comment portion of the agenda for the Board to enter into a debate with members of the community. Because non-agenda items are not publicly posted in advance, no action will be taken on public comment regarding non-agenda items this evening. If anyone has a comment they'd like to make at this time, please approach the microphone and state your name and address prior to making your comment.
Hello, my name is Jennifer Larson. It's 2402 North 72nd Street. I'm coming to you today because my husband and I would like to talk to you about the special education in Wauwatosa. We have a well-wanted experience in the community and in the school district. We are raising four children ages seven through eighteen. They have attended several Tulsa schools, including Washington, Roosevelt, Jefferson, Longfellow, and Tulsa East. We are coming to you today in concerns with Jefferson School. Coming out of last year's IP meeting for our youngest, who is seven, there were several open questions that went unanswered, and it was unclear to us how to address them. So we met with Dr. Erdl and spoke to some of the School Board members, but had not had the opportunity to resolve them because a larger annual issue came up. At the teacher meet and greet, we were surprised to learn that our son's class size was increased from two and a half students to five students with a plan for teacher and aid support, and that our view was insufficient. Just so you know, our son is in intensive services at Jefferson. We were not the only ones who felt this way. It was evident that the teachers, aides, other parents, and also the principal were concerned as well. And this was not the first time that we were confronted with this type of situation at the beginning of the school year and had to voice our concerns only to see a reallocation of resources that made sense weeks, but later on into the school year, losing valuable learning time. Last week, we were informed that Jefferson will be hiring another special education teacher, which we are very appreciative for, but we still have concerns. We have to ask, why did this take so long to come to this conclusion, and why do we have to react and overreact until our voices heard? And how long will it be until this teacher is hired and actually impacts our son's classroom day-to-day? We still have unresolved open issues around the IP that we have not been able to discuss. We have concerns around safety and staffing, and for the future, we have concerns about what the district can even offer him in terms of education based on where he is today. When we put our normal child in kindergarten, we know that they should move on grade by grade, school by school, until graduation. For our son, we really don't know what is going to happen from one year to the next because he has autism and cannot be mainstreamed at this time. These issues are not unique to the Wauwatosa School District. A simple Google search yields dozens of results in issues across districts across the country. We challenge this district not only to improve in this area, but to aspire to become a model that others would emulate from education to parent involvement and communication. The educational guidelines, the roadmap, the improvement, and the creation of programs to educate our son or any child with his circumstances needs to be established. Thank you. We do have more. I just was in the interest of time, but so I have copies here for you to go over that explains our situation more.
Thank you. Is there any further public comment at this time?
Hi, my name is Susan Jaimo. I live at 6421 West Minneke Avenue in Wauwatosa. My son has autism. He is also a student in the same class as Ms. Larson's son. And I'm here also to talk about the situation in that classroom. I'm not going to go into all the details because I think she hit the most important points, but I will say that the change in the class size was decided in July or August, sometime over the summer, and the parents were never informed by letter or anything. And so the parents wrote a joint letter expressing our concerns. I never got a response from Mr. Seidel or Ms. Kwiatkowski. I finally called Mr. Seidel last week and discussed the matter. I think as taxpayers, we're paying these people salaries, and I expect better, more responsiveness from people when they get a concerned voice by a number of parents in the classroom. Yes, there will be a new special ed teacher hired, but that doesn't take away from the fact that the class size has doubled. I've been in that classroom, and I've watched the teacher and the aides, and they're doing a valiant job, but they can't attend to all those children's need. All five of those kids have very, very severe physical and/or cognitive needs, and they cannot do very well with that when there's just one teacher and one aide in that classroom with five kids, two of whom are in wheelchairs, three of whom are autistic. The other problem is when they attend to one child, the other child or children are being left unattended. So I'm asking the School Board to look into this and monitor this situation and make sure that the situation improves. We shouldn't have to beg for special ed services. Our children have a right to a free, appropriate public education, and it's free and it's public, but it's certainly not appropriate, and I can't tell you I saw much education going on in that classroom because there wasn't enough staffing in there. So I'm hoping that this doesn't happen again and that the school district, the School Board, monitor the situation and make sure that our children are getting the education that they deserve and have a right to. And I also say, in closing, the district may have financial problems, but so does every other district in the country. And it's not fair to burden the most vulnerable students with whatever kind of budgeting problems this district might have, and it's also illegal. Thank you.
Is there any further public comment at this time? Thank you very much for your comments this evening. Thank you. There's only one copy, so I'd ask that Dr. Erdl, if you could make sure that this is distributed to all Board members? Thank you. That brings us to approval of the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda which Board members would like to remove for separate discussion or action? Mr. Meyer?
Yes, please. I have one question concerning the combined administrator contract, so however it's appropriate to separate out the...
Are you asking for that to be done by separate vote, or would you like to simply ask your question prior to a vote?
If I may simply ask my question, that would be fine with me.
That is fine. Please proceed.
The question is for Dr. Erdl, that we have had budgeted 3% for administrator salaries, and the question is, how much of that 3% is actually used with the administrative?
If you look at the costing, the way that kilio costing has been done in the past, and pull out the two principals that were promoted to higher salaried positions, it's actually a 2.37% total package. If you give them the average of the increase at 3%, take the additional dollars, pull that out, but overall costing is 2.98%.
So on an apples-to-apples basis, it would be 2.3...
2.37, if you compare the way it costs the teachers' package.
And it went to the 2.9...was it 8 you said?
2.98.
2.98, because for example, Mr. Clarkel moved from an elementary position to the high school position, so that has significantly more salary as a higher level position. So like-to-like, it was the 2.37.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
After having that question answered, do you wish to have that item separated? Mr. Meyer?
No, thank you. I'm fine with it being in the general vote.
Are there any other items for separate discussion? Yes?
Yes, I would like to have separate action on the item with respect to the individual who was requesting a leave of absence.
All right, any other requests? And is there a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of the item pertaining to the individual who requested a year leave of absence?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any Board discussion of the consent agenda except for that one item? Is there any public comment on the consent agenda? And Dr. Erdl, what do you call the roll? And again, I would remind you that we're voting on everything except the leave of absence portion.
Mr. Kroner? Yes. Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Milfeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Weber?
Yes.
Mrs. Fee?
Yes. Mrs. Weber, you have discussion on the separate item?
Yes, I know this individual to be an extremely valuable member in our maintenance staff, and I would really like to see him be granted his leave of absence, and hopefully he would come back after that year. Again, I know, I've seen his work throughout the district. In fact, he worked very hard on getting this room ready for our Board meeting when we moved to the Board, so I cannot approve this recommendation.
Is there any further Board discussion of that item? Is there a motion to approve the item as stated on the consent agenda report?
Can I?
Yes.
Since it's been brought up, I'm just going to make an assumption that the decision is based on the collective bargaining agreement. Is that correct?
Yeah, I'd be willing to comment. There's a provision in the collective bargaining agreement for custodians to allow for leaves of absence, and that provision has a general procedure for granting it, which is they ask their supervisor, and then it's a recommendation from the superintendent as to whether to grant it. And then in the remaining sections of that article, it specifies some reasons which you could grant a leave for, and that would be a military leave of absence, which is covered by law. We would have to grant that as well as annual reserve training, collective bargaining negotiations, and jury duty. It's ambiguous as to whether or not the request for leave was covered under that provision, although I think we would agree that the district has the right to grant leaves of In order to inform our recommendation, asked him what the purpose of that leave was, and the reason that we asked that is because sometimes employees are not necessarily aware of the benefits that they have available to them. So for example, if it were a medical leave of absence, or a child-rearing leave of absence, or some other hardship, we would want to appropriately address that. The employee informed us that he did not want to discuss the reasons for the leave of absence, and we were unable to make an informed recommendation to approve that leave. And so our recommendation is to deny that. In order to grant an extraordinary benefit like a one-year leave of absence, we would prefer to have some understanding as to what that was for and why an employee needed that.
Thank you.
Any further Board discussion? Mr. Meyer?
First of all, I want to make clear that with how I vote, that it is not that I am disagreeing...if I vote in a manner that grants the leave of absence or denies the refusal, it's not that I'm disagreeing with administration's recommendation. The administration's recommendation may be appropriate, but I believe it is within the province of the Board to recognize some extenuating reason such as what Mrs. Weber has cited, and that is really only for us to decide. So in some cases, it is the situation that it would not be appropriate for administration to recommend the leave. However, it may indeed be appropriate for the Board to grant the leave because it may be of a nature that is only for us to grant. So that said, how we're voting on this with the wording, I want to be sure I understand how to vote for the outcome I'd like because there seems to be sort of a double negative here because we're voting to deny a refusal. Is that correct?
Voting to deny a request. Language states that the Board deny the request.
So if we vote no, we are voting to override the denial of the request.
Yes.
Okay. So a no vote actually provides the leave?
Correct. Yes.
Okay. And then I'll just say that I don't have personal knowledge of this situation, but Mrs. Weber's judgment in this matter is persuasive on my vote.
Any further Board discussion? Actually, I'm not certain if there's a motion before us at this time. Is there a motion to deny the request as outlined in the consent agenda report?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Randall. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. Is there any community comment on this portion of the consent agenda report? Is there any further Board discussion? Dr. Erdl, would you call the roll?
Mr. Kroner? Yes. Mr. Meyer?
No.
Mrs. Milfeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Weber?
No.
Mrs. Fee?
Yes. The motion passes. That brings us to the recognition portion of our agenda. On September 9th, during a surprise ceremony, State Superintendent of Schools Tony Evers presented Madison Elementary Physical Education teacher Mike Brennan an award naming him Wisconsin Elementary Teacher of the Year. We have invited Mr. Brennan here to this meeting to congratulate him on this honor. Would you please come forward? We have something for you. Welcome. Thank you for coming in. Bent over by the Wauwatosa School District, Michael Brennan, Madison Elementary School. Recognition of being named September Spencer Elementary Teacher of the Year. Congratulations, you're an asset to our district and great family of students. Did anyone else like to make a comment? Mrs. Randall?
Congratulations, and it was such a surprise that we...it was during our workday, so I'm sorry I could not be there, be present. Yeah, 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 right. So I would have loved to have been there, and I saw some of the photos and read of your many achievements, so congratulations. Thank you.
If I may say something as well, you know, I've always...I share this with the district. I'm extremely happy for the district as well. My 13-plus years here, I've always felt very supported by not only the School Board, but by the superintendents, by district administrators, by my colleagues at Madison Elementary. So I'm honored, I'm flattered, extremely humbled, but I share this with the whole district. I'm very happy for the district as well, and I can guarantee you they will continue to do what I do.
Well, thank you very much, and congratulations again. We now come to our action items. Mr. Ray?
It is recommended that the School Board approve the revisions made to Policy 7540: Computer Technology, Network, and Internet Acceptable Use and Safety, as reviewed and discussed at the September 13th meeting, and I so moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. That was Mrs. Randall?
Yeah.
Thank you. Is there any Board discussion of this item? Is there any community comment? Dr. Erdl, would you call the roll?
Mr. Kroner? Yes. Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Milfeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Weber?
Yes.
Mrs. Fee?
Yes. That brings us to reports to the Board, and we'll begin with Student Services. They are on the agenda. There are two items on the agenda, the Third Friday enrollments and the open enrollment report. I would ask Ms. Kwiatkowski if you wish to take them the other way, whichever works
Thank you. I am going to start with the Third Friday report to the Wauwatosa School District, which is a summary of our enrollment as of the Third Friday of the year, which is when we have to report it to the state. The first slide I'm going to be showing you tonight is the total enrollment for the district. As you can see, this year on Third Friday, our enrollment number was 7,335 students. That is every student that we are able to count here in our district. That's, as you can see, an increase of 63 students from the previous year. If you break that down according to age or grade level of the students, you can see at the elementary level, on Third Friday this year, we had 3,462 students. That is an increase of 53 students. At the middle school, we had 1,529, which is down four students from the previous year. And then at the high school, we had 2,344 students, which is an increase of 14 from the previous year. So that's the total students that we count across the district, including all of our If you look at this slide, this is our Third Friday less the county ground programs. There were...on Third Friday this year, there was a total of 174 students on the county grounds. So when you take those students out, our enrollment numbers were 7,161 students. Again, I'll break them down according to the level that we count students. On our Third Friday without the county grounds at the elementary level, we had 3,445. Middle school, 1,491. And then the high school is 2,225 students. This slide is our resident enrollment for the district. If you look at our resident enrollment, that includes students that reside in our district, including we do count students from the county grounds in that number. On that, our total number for that is 81 students, an increase of 81 students from the previous year. Here again is the elementary level, 2,819. Middle school, which is 1,213, and our high school, students of 1,907. The next section that I'm going to go over is the amount of total open enrollment students that we have in the school district. Overall, we have a total of 1,125 students that attend the Wauwatosa Schools through open enrollment. Again, broken down according to grade level, 551 at the elementary, 273 at the middle school, and then 301 at the high school. I included some information on tuition waivers. Additional year tuition waivers are currently...we have a total of 37 students that are attending Wauwatosa School District under an additional year tuition waiver. That means that they moved after February 1st of 2010. So we have students that are currently attending under district or under tuition waivers, and then some that are counted separately as attending under additional year tuition waiver. And they're considered non-resident for attendance purposes. One of the students actually will become a resident to the school district. We have information where they've paid tuition. They are in the process of doing a remodel and then moving into the district, so they will become a resident. The final information I have for you in regard to enrollment is our Chapter 220 students. We have a total of 233 students in the district currently enrolled in the district through the Chapter 220 program. Again, that's been decreasing over time. This year at the elementary level, we have a total of 77 students. Middle school, 37 students. And then at the high school, we have a total of 119 students. And that is a breakdown of our enrollment numbers for the 2010-11 school year.
Board members, any questions? Mr. Meyer?
The Board has a handout of a spreadsheet that I did. If I may explain it?
Do you like me to pull that up on?
Oh, can you?
I can.
Oh, wonderful. Well, now I guess everybody's going to have to assess the value for themselves, but if you look at the top spreadsheet, our 09-10 enrollment at grade 11 was 421. And when those 11th graders move up to be 12th graders in 2010-11, instead of having 421, we have 440, which means a net gain of 19 residents when that grade was promoted. And of course, there could be all various reasons for this. But what I did was, I took that calculation, and for every grade in every year on the top spreadsheet, I put that net change calculation in the bottom spreadsheet. So please, Ms. Kwiatkowski, if you could scroll up a little bit so we can see the 19. There on the bottom right in the green, the green rows are high school for 2010-2011 for 12th grade, is that 19. So when that cohort, or when that grade arrived, when that bunch of kids arrived in 12th grade, there were actually 19 more of them than the year before. So every one of these cells indicates whether we have more or less for the grade as it moved into the next year. And if it's in parentheses in red, we lost kids, we had a net resident enrollment loss. So I'm not quite sure what to make of it. I think it speaks to us a little bit in that, on average, we do tend to gain residents as kids move up from senior kindergarten. Now, I guess if you did some serious statistical analysis of it, maybe the conclusions aren't so reliable. But we had some people in here six years ago who did serious statistical analysis on our enrollment and tried to do projections, and that proved to be not so reliable as well. So ultimately then, what I see is that we don't lose kids as the years go by, net-net. I mean, some years, we lose some kids in some grades. It is pretty dramatic to see, to me at least, that in middle school and high...in middle school, we gained kids in all three grades as the year progressed. We lost a few kids in high school, but basically we came out ahead. And then, of course, the senior kindergarten number tends to stay with us. So I'm not exactly sure what conclusions to draw from this, but I think it definitely shows we don't, on average, lose children after they arrive in senior kindergarten. It shows we do gain significant numbers of kids at the beginning of high school in ninth grade, and we tend not to lose the children over time. And I kind of look at this from a financial perspective, which is why I do it. I'm wondering in, you know, for the horizon ahead of us, if we're headed for trouble or not. And I guess my ultimate conclusion is that we're...so far, we're okay, that, you know, we don't see a serious drop in senior kindergarten enrollment. We seem to be popular in the community, and that we're gaining enrollment in various grades in the system. Last year, of course, we had 445 senior kindergarteners, and this year, we had 390... 406 in '08-'09, a big bump up in '9-10, and now we're back to 397 in '10-11. I suppose if that number for senior kindergarteners is a lot lower next year, that should start to tell us something, you know, that's not good. But certainly, we're not at the levels that we were in senior kindergarten in '04-'05 and '06-'07, for example. So my final conclusion is that it is more or less a positive picture, and a picture that I wouldn't be so certain of if I didn't have this net change chart. that I wouldn't be so certain of if I didn't have this net change chart.
Thank you. Any further board comment? Dr. Erdl?
Just a couple of thoughts on the enrollment. I think some of this information, when you look at, I go back to the marketing committee, when their target has been the transition grades. And if you look at, you see where we pick up from ninth grade, sixth grade, and SK, I think their work is validated in saying, let's target those areas because we know we can gain students in those areas. I look at enrollment projections, and there's different companies that will do them, from Wisconsin, UW does them, there's a company out of Michigan. I never believe in any of them. I've never seen them come true. I know the predictions were that we were going to go down for about 10 or 12 years and then level off. But I think this is hugely positive news, in particular, the elementary level, where I believe we, 82 students, we went up at the elementary level. We know there's some dips with smaller classes going through middle school and high school. So I think it's important that we continue to grow as a district, continue to do a good job, and continue to be the choice for, for parents to make a decision for their kids to come to our schools. And I think, I think we're doing that. I don't know that this data alone tells that story, but I think over time, I look at enrollment data, you look trends backward and going forward. I don't think we can predict the future, but if you look where things are going right now, I think it's certainly a positive direction. We're 75, I think roughly 75% of the districts in the state are declining enrollment districts. And the impact on the funding, the calculations for funding and how that works, the declining enrollment is just terrible. And we're in a situation where we're going up. So that's a, that's a real good sign for us. And hopefully, we can keep that at least level or if not continuing to go up, so.
Any further board question or comment? Mrs. Weber?
I truly believe that these numbers tell us that we are doing good things and we're moving in the right direction. But we can't rest. We must continue to listen very carefully to what our district leadership is telling us and directions that they are suggesting we take. I really value your report tonight, Ms. Kwiatkowski. It's an exciting report because I've been following it. As has been stated, many districts are losing, and we're lessoned with enrollment. So we need to be aware of that and keep working to improve.
Is there any community comment on this portion of the Student Services Report? We'll move on to open enrollment.
Just for breaking down then the open enrollment portion and giving a little bit more information to everybody in regards to that, currently, there are 980 students who are continuing in the open enrollment program for 2010-2011 school year, ranging from grades senior kindergarten to 2010-11 school year. 82 students were attending the Wauwautosa School District on a tuition waiver and applied for open enrollment. Currently, nine of those students declined their seats, opting to attend their new resident district. Six have moved into Wauwautosa, so our projected new number of continuing students is 67. On April 8th and June 2nd, students were approved to attend the Wauwautosa School District to fill classes. A total of 98 students were approved to attend in grades JK through 5. Of the 98 students, 78 students actually accepted their seats and are currently attending. This is the breakdown according to, according to what we have for our open enrollment. So for the total this year, we have 1,125 open enrollment seats, which is identical to what we had last year ironically.
Trace, would you mind, excuse me, going back to the prior slide with the, by the grades? One more. Thanks. Do you have a question?
No, I just wanted to.
Okay. Mr. Ray?
I do have a question that entered that slide and read into the information from the slide previous to it. When we had 98 seats and we ended up with 78 students accepting, so we had 20 seats that basically went unaccounted for or we didn't fill, basically?
Basically, it's families that either don't show up or families who, some of those families actually, I believe, moved into the district, so didn't end up accepting their open enrollment. So as we're working with deadlines and trying to fill seats, we were down to crunch time, calling families on the last day, offering them seats, and that was.
That's, yeah, that was going to be my question. If you hear from a family, for example, who's offered one of those initial 98 seats and they ultimately contact you and say, for whatever reason, we're going to decline, is that seat then offered to the next student in line on the waiting list?
Yes, it is, if we have the information that they've declined.
But then at some point in time, you just run out of time.
At some point in time. And we try to be sensitive to deadlines and letting families know.
I think it's fair to say on the deadline date, every seat is filled through call, phone calls, and offering seats even up to the last minute. And then I think the point after that is when we get the declines or on first day where people just don't show and didn't inform us and went to another district or to their home district or whatever it was.
Can you remind us again, what's the last date on which you can make a seat available or extend an invitation to a student or a family? Is it sometime in August?
It is, it's.
Second, I believe it's the second Friday.
It's the second, yeah, second Friday in August. Thank you.
Anything further, board members? Mr. Kroner?
Just one comment. You said it was ironic that we had the same number of open enrollment students, but isn't that our current policy that we maintain that same number?
No, the policy is to fill open seats but maintain the, no, it's to fill the open seats.
Previously, you said, I thought that we would not add any more student, that if students left the district, we would add the same number of students to keep the number that we had the previous year.
That was in relationship to the additional students that we added. So the, when we added 270 last year, it was try to maintain that group of 270. Overall, the, I mean, my belief is, and my hope is, that we can maintain the same number of open enrollment students. So the fact that we did it, and I said if, I would always say that if resident enrollment goes up, we. Finally, that has come true, where we haven't increased open enrollment because resident enrollment has gone up enough to where we've been able to maintain that same number.
Because one thing I noticed in the data that we might have to think about in the future is that in the elementary schools, we have 551 open enrollment students, but 300 in the high schools. So as those students leave the elementary schools, if we're going to try to stay at that level of 1,125, we'll have more students leaving the elementary school than we have available slots to fill it with. So we'll either have to have classrooms that are low enrollment or modified in some way. So if resident enrollment, resident enrollment continues to increase, maybe that will take care of the problem. But it seems like we're overloaded at the elementary school at the moment, and if we have a rigid or, you know, semi-rigid ceiling, we might have to visit that in the future as they leave the elementary schools for the middle schools.
But remember, there's seven grades at the elementary. If you're spreading that number across, seven grades versus four and three, high school and middle school.
Any further board comment or question? Is there any community comment on the Student Services Report?
I was just going to make.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I was just going to make one other observation. Although open enrollment numbers remained steady from last year to this year, 220 numbers did go down. So overall, our non-resident student population went down somewhat.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you very much. That brings us to the Student Learning Report. Mrs. Ehrenberger?
I'll just start out on this, the data coordinator and analyst position. I don't know if it's necessarily background on it, but as we move forward, the intent is to have this, not intent, we're going to have this as a two-year position funded through the Jobs Act money. And similar, other than, I think I mentioned at the last meeting, the goal with the Jobs Act money is to use that to fund current staff this year, to roll that forward so next year, we're not looking at reductions. But this is one piece that would come out, looking at a two-year position. And if we deem this position, which I, my intention would be that this will be a position that we can't afford to lose, we'll be finding a way through reducing expenditures in some other way to maintain this position after two years. But I think it gives us an opportunity, the Jobs Act gives us an opportunity to get a position like this in place. And if we have the job description put together, I know Beth and Dan even up through today have been working on it. We've gotten some feedback from some of the board members, and I guess we're here tonight to share this and get more feedback and so we can put together a job description that we want to put out and post.
And that concludes the presentation. I think you kind of said a lot of that. I would just add to that, that this is a position that fills a gap that we've identified in the area of statistical and technology skills needed for us to be able to use data across the district, the buildings and to the classroom level, as well as be able to track data longitudinally over time and have something that's very systematic and systemic so that it's not dependent on the skill of someone at a given time, but that we can get some things in place that would stay in place for the district to be able to access that same kind of data-driven decision-making. I stab at.
Who was involved in creating this description?
Myself, Dr. Erdl, Mr. Shanen. I actually looked at other school districts and asked for some samples from some of our local school districts at a curriculum and instruction meeting and some districts that have some similar type positions. So I received some descriptions from them. I did check online also and try to look at what some of those skill sets that we're trying to find, how they might be described. But in the district, I would say, the three of us.
And I also consulted with, with some outside evaluation experience and kind of ran that job description by them in terms of someone that does similar work.
Board members, questions, comments? Mr. Meyer?
The label business intelligence, and I have a hard time putting things to words sometimes for what I'm thinking. So I confess, I go to Wikipedia and see how they describe it and see whether it says what I'm trying to say. And so Wikipedia does say, "Business intelligence tools are a type of application software designed to report, analyze, and present data. The tools generally read data that have been previously stored, often though not necessarily in a data warehouse or data mart." So what I'm trying to say is that if you put the term business intelligence in here, those key words might catch some additional people when you throw out your net that you might not catch otherwise. It seems that the warehouse is the database and the business intelligence software reports the data out of the warehouse. And I'm sure people who do the same function in some companies maybe have one, the words in one, you know, the words, some will have, some of the words and some titles will have others of the words. So that would be helpful. And there was, there were data analyst positions posted for DPI, and they had a salary range up to about $80,000 a year. And actually, I believe our job description is a more substantial job description than theirs was. So just to kind of put that in perspective, I think with this description we have here now, we'd have a better candidate if we get a hit on somebody who is looking, maybe somebody who's retired from an information systems corporate department. And this would be quite a good job for someone.
Any other board question or comment? Mr. Kroner?
What are the available options for the funds that would be used for this position? What other available options are there, allowable options? Only for funding a salary or is it what else could it be used for?
It needs to go towards salary and benefits. But ultimately, you can supplant, so it can be, it could ultimately be used for anything. But the true intent of the jobs bill money is to pay for salary and benefits for positions.
I've looked at the two different job descriptions that we've had, and I've spoken to you about this. I mean, I'm not sure this is the, in my mind, this was the person that we were going to be looking for when we were looking for a data analyst. To me, what the district needs is someone that has very strong quantitative and statistical analysis skills. And in both job descriptions, I've seen, you know, being familiar with statistical analysis software is kind of far down the list of skill requirements. And I would like to see us move a little more slowly, maybe use a consultant for a year or two to find out exactly what it is that we need in the district before we hire someone and bring them here and maybe not have the necessary skills that we're looking for. I mean, to me, one need I have as a board member is when we get data that's been analyzed statistically, is to know what is the value of that data? You know, is it a two-point swing on a 70-point test with error that's involved? Is that meaningful or not? You know, when we make decisions, we need, we need to have a solid quantitative analysis to know whether what we're looking at is meaningful or not. And I don't know whether this job description is going to bring the person in that has those kind of quantitative skills unless you make them, you know, right at the top of the list. So I was thinking more of someone that has a degree in statistics or quantitative analysis or, you know, something more along those lines that can really dig into the data that we get, help us decide what data we need to get, how to collect it and to analyze it in a rigorous, independent way to tell us, you know, is what we're getting significant or not, and is it telling us what we wanted to tell us? So I think we're moving in the right direction, but I prefer to go a little slower till we know really what kind of skills we need in the district to really analyze the data and make sure what we're getting is really what we need to get.
Mrs. Randall?
Thank you for pursuing this. This has been needed for a while, and I think that using the funding mechanism that you found is extremely smart. Mrs. Ehrenberger, you, your role in this, you would be the primary contact with this individual initially, is that correct?
I think Dr. Erdl and then myself.
I think both of us would be.
Okay. So, you know, you've talked to other districts. You have been the keeper of our statistics and our.
Our student achievement data.
Student achievement data. So you build that around that. So I'm assuming you have some idea, but that you're going to be firming these things up as, as this person comes in. I mean.
Yeah, I think we do have a pretty clear idea of what some of our needs are based on some of the things that we know we're not utilizing right now because we're missing a skill set to be able to, to even for our data warehousing, you know, just even starting there, you know, there are some deficits. So yes.
Okay. And so the other thing is, I think one of the goals is to make data more accessible to the rest of the staff in a more meaningful way. So, okay, thanks. Thank you.
Meyer?
My hope is that if we put this, if we post this in the right search database, such as one maybe Dice.com, with the words business intelligence and data warehouse and functional database design, my hope is we'd pull quite a number of applicants. And those kinds of people will be very good at designing the data warehouse and presenting data for other people to use. That's more, and for data for other people to analyze, that's more their bailiwick. And it's a, you know, to have a consultant, I actually used to do consulting, and that is the kind of thing that would be a good fit for that. Now that said, I see where Mr. Kroner is going, that, you know, there's the statistical analysis itself. And certainly, I can agree with. itself. And certainly I can agree with his suggestion that statistical analysis skills be at a higher place in the, in the job description. I mean, if, hopefully, we can find just the right person, and it is only a two-year commitment, as, as I'm understanding it. So, um, it's kind of like, well, what do you want? Do you want somebody who is really good at analyzing data, or do you want somebody who is really good at collecting and presenting the data? And they aren't the same skill. And that's where the problem comes in, in that the, the description as written is, is much more capable of presenting data to everyone else to analyze. And I'm completely seeing what Mr. Kroner is saying. Well, you know, you know, there are some statistical skills that may help us in that analysis. And gee, can we please have both?
I think we have to have both. Because it is, it's definitely a people's business, and if they can't present and, um, share information in a good way, it becomes kind of useless data. So I really think, I mean, we're looking for both. And it may happen we go through a process and we don't have, the person's not there, and then we look at the consulting role and, and the aspect of, um, of going down that route. But hopefully, somebody's out there.
Well, it may be a question of being patient, or, um, you know, if, if one, um, jobs search platform doesn't pan out, then maybe we try another one, you know, or maybe we reword the thing, or something like that. I, I think there will be a person out there. It's just a question of, it, this is, as I said, this is a far better, stronger job description than what I saw on the DPI website for their positions. This will be quite a powerful position for us as far as helping us. And it's, it's written in a way that I, I venture to say most school districts don't look for this kind of person. So we'll be like way ahead of the game. I kind of liken it to what we did with HR and, and technology, you know, to reach into industry and find someone who has a skill set that's a few steps beyond what we traditionally would look for from within the pure educational world.
I thought the dual reporting was interesting, um, and I think it's necessary now that you have explained it. Um, one thing I have a question about is, do we have a statistical analysis infrastructure, any kind of systems to support this person, or will, will we be buying those things based on the recommendations that this person brings to the-
I think it'll, it'll be some of both. We have, we have a data warehouse. I mean, Power School has ability, I mean, it is a data warehouse. We also have with Power School Inform, which is, um, it's an analysis tool. Uh, it's not a complete analysis tool. It has limitations. So I would say it's a little both. Being able to maximize those that we do, those things that we do have, and be able to supplement and recommend to us, um, possible other analytical software that might, um, enhance some of the things that we want to do. So I, I think it's a little both of those. So we have some stuff that isn't fully utilized, and we have a need for some, somebody to help us bridge some things that even having our systems being able to talk to each other, so that, you know, we have Oasis in Student Services, Dan uses Skyward, and being able to help us to connect some of those things as well, so we can do some cross-sections of data analysis as well.
Mr. Ray?
I just wanted to make a couple of comments to sort of set this in this job description's gonna say, and we're doing it at a point in time in late September of 2010. But, but really, I think that this, the fact that we're considering a position like this, uh, has its impetus going back a couple of years, when the board started talking about, um, um, being more data-driven and being more tuned into data and, and basing decisions on data that's available. Uh, we started doing that in, in our lighthouse meetings initially, and in some other in-service meetings. And, um, I don't know, six months ago, maybe 12 months ago, we sort of tossed out, or somebody tossed out, the idea about, at some point in time about, it would be nice if we had a data analyst who was a district employee that would help us look at some of this stuff, because over time, we've started to accumulate more data. We've definitely have been talking about using data to help us make decisions about, is this curricular program a good one? Do we want to change? If we want to change, and now we go, we've gone to something else, is that new program working, and do we have the data to support that it's working? Um, but, uh, this, we didn't start talking about this position in September of 2010, I guess is my point. It's kind of evolved out of a process that started a couple of years ago. When it started, we weren't necessarily thinking about a person having a position like this one. But I'd say within the last six months or so, that idea has become more, uh, it's been discussed more informally in services. It started out maybe as a dream position, and now the fact that we're moving in into a reality position, I think is a, is a nice step forward that we're making. So, um, I think it's important just to, to comment about where we've come from in order to be at a position where we're talking about hiring someone to fulfill this need.
Meyer?
And I agree with that, and I'm pleased that we're using data. But I think when you use data, we have to keep in mind that the most critical thing is that the data is accurate. And that if we're gonna be making decisions based on the data, you can present it a dozen different ways, but if the core data isn't accurate or meaningful, you know, we can't make the right decision. You know, if we're looking at whether a particular curriculum program is working or not, and scores have gone up three points, we need to know whether the error associated with that makes that significant or insignificant value. And so I think we just need to keep in mind that when we look at data, the value of the data before it's analyzed is of paramount importance. I mean, if you were gonna keep a record at your house of the average temperature, and you could present that in many ways you wanted, but if your thermometer isn't accurate, you know, you can't make any decisions. It's not gonna be meaningful. So however we do this, I just want, I think it's really, really important to think that when we're up here making decisions with numbers in front of us, that we're confident, you know, we have someone that's, has looked that over from a quantitative and statistical method in a rigorous way, and is telling us, yes, these numbers are significant, or they're not significant, or I would design the study this way if this is what answer you want, or I would design it a different way if, if you want a different kind of an answer. So as, as we move forward, I think we need to be really careful that we, that we either hire two different people, one person that can mine data and out of databases and present it in different formats, and maybe use a consultant or someone else that has a, a really strong quantitative statistical background to do the mathematics necessary to help us know whether the data is meaningful or not. So I'm, I'm really glad we're moving in this direction, but I think we really have to keep in mind that we, that we keep an eye on the quality of the data that we're looking at.
One of the things that we're including in the interview process would be asking them to do. So it wouldn't just be an interview with a person, asking them what they can and cannot do, but that they'd actually have to perform some duties of the, the skills that we're looking for in the position. So Dan and I have already talked about that as a way to also control, to make sure that we have some, an individual that really is able to carry out the things that we're expecting them to be able to do, not just to be able to talk about it, be able to show us evidence of, um, having performed those kinds of tasks and duties prior to this position as well.
I can, I, I just wanna say I'm agreeing. Um, and we do need both, the, the business intelligence skills and the data warehousing skills, and the functional database design skills. Those are the skills that are gonna enable the person to effectively, efficiently, on a regular basis, deliver data to the classroom teacher, to the building administrator, and to, um, student, student learning. Now, that said, I recall our struggle six years ago over whether residents were and non-residents could mix in this district, and whether non-residents were a drag on our district. And, um, data was presented to the TOSA committee that was absolutely meaningless, in my opinion. Yet it was presented as evidence that, um, non-residents were underperforming. And I challenged the data, and the then superintendent explicitly told me, "I have a PhD and you don't. Therefore, I'm right and you're not." And I could have laid out my pedigree as well, but the point is, I'm agreeing with Mr. Kroner, that we need somebody who can interpret this data to assess the value of it. And we need, as I'm saying, somebody who can deliver the data, um, to the many classrooms. So we do need both.
Mrs. Randall?
The way the discussion is going, um, do you feel confident, Mrs. Ehrenberger, Dr. Erdl, that you know what you're looking for?
Yes.
Yes, I, I think so. And I think we feel confident enough too, that there are people to recruit. There are, we do think that we'll have a good candidate pool. I'll, I would be surprised if we didn't.
And that's what we need to know. We, we can't get involved in the hiring or the background or the, you know, we have to trust that you know what it is you need, and you know what qualifications you're looking for, and that you've done some research into this.
We believe we can steal somebody away from another organization, actually.
I wanna say- I appreciate that, your vigilance in wanting us to have a highly qualified person for this position, but nobody wants that more than Dr. Erdl and myself. Um, there, there are great advantages to us being able to take our organization to a different level, um, having, um, full utilization of the data that we have collected in this district. So, um, it, it matters more to, um, you know, him and I then. I mean, I'm glad that you have the same level of appreciation for what it can do for us, because, um, if done correctly, it will provide us a whole nother level of improvement for the district. So-
Well, I, yeah, I think we hear that over and over every time we get a report, every time we get a, a new recommendation for a course or materials, that you know, you have the data, you, you need to know how to, to pull it together and use it to move us forward. The other part of this that really strikes me is the collaborative climate of the professional learning communities. Um, this is a great time to have this kind of information available to people at every level in the district, because everybody at every level is on board with, with moving us ahead. And everybody knows where we want to go. So to have, you know, some black and white figures, statistics, so on, um, that they can talk about together, um, and that you can use, um, I just think, I think it's great. And I, um, you know, I know Mr. Meyer, um, really has a lot of background on this, so I'm sure you would be able to answer a question or two if, you know, came up along the way. But, you know, you guys have to hire. You have to do it. So.
Further? Mr. Kroner?
Just have one last comment. I, I know that the board has to be really careful about getting involved in, in many of any hiring decisions. But to me, this particular position is important and does involve, should have board involvement, because we're gonna be using the data to make important district, decisions for the district. So I think, although I know that it's important that, that you evaluate what's, you know, important from the district for an educational level, and that's appropriate, because that's what you do, you know, we also should have input in this, because we're gonna also be using that data to make important decisions. So I, my comments are, I don't want to be construed as trying to go over a boundary that we normally set as far as hiring, but just simply as a board member, trying to make sure that we have the right person and processes in place, so that when I make decisions, I know the data is firm and solid, and I'm comfortable, you know, with working with that and knowing which direction to go. So.
Mrs. Mielefeld?
Just one final thing. When you're looking at data, you have to ask questions. You do have to ask questions. Every person is going to look at it, even if you have someone with business intelligence, and they know our district, and they know our strategies, and they, you know, they, they want to improve kids, and, and they have some background in that, we still have to ask questions on the data. I mean, as, as part of processing through it. So I personally, as a board member, will not assume that when I'm receiving data, that everything has been considered, because it may not have been. But what I think will be valuable for this position is sometimes we don't have all the assumptions, or we would like to have maybe a different comfort level of the data, but it still doesn't, you still have to ask questions and understand, what is the data telling us? Why is it important? And that's not something someone else can always do for you.
Anything further from the board? Is there any community comment on this agenda item? Thank you very much.
The intent will be to bring this back for approval at the next meeting in a finalized form.
That brings us to our second opportunity for public comment on non-agenda items. If anyone would like to make a comment at this time, please approach the microphone and state your name and address prior to your comment. Seeing none, I believe a motion to adjourn is in order. Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. Is, and all in favor? Any opposed? Please stand adjourned. Thank you.